Okay Commissioners, the next two items, item 10 and 11, are an application for certificate of appropriateness, Borough of Manhattan, it's 640 Broadway, AKA 172 Crosby Street, and 60-74 Bleecker Street, located within the NoHo Historic District. The first is docket number 165517, block 522, lot 14. Classical revival style store loft and office building designed by DeLemos and Cordes, and built in 1896-97. Application is to construct a rooftop addition. And item number 11 is the same address, docket number 165773. The application is for a modification of use in bulk, a classical revival style store loft and office building designed by DeLemos and Cordes, and built in 1896-97. Application is to request that the Landmarks Preservation Commission issue a report to the City Planning Commission relating to an application for modification of bulk pursuant to Section 74711 of the zoning resolution.
Okay, good morning Commissioners, Gabriella Vitale, Preservation Staff. This application is for 640 Broadway, it's located in the NoHo Historic District. It's a long, narrow building facing Bleecker Street, bounded by Crosby Street and Broadway. The applications before you today is to request a modification of bulk pursuant to a one-story rooftop addition. I will, before jumping into the proposal, I will introduce the project applicant's attorney to further explain the modification of bulk. The rooftop addition is setback from all three facades. The glass railing on top of the addition is minimally visible from Broadway looking south, and from Lafayette looking west towards Bleecker, and the applicant has documented that in a mock-up, which is in your packet and further into the presentation. Just state your name for the record, and if you need to go back and forth.
Good morning Commissioners, good afternoon. My name is Deirdre Parson, I'm from Riggert-Trolrigg, and we're the attorneys representing the applicant in connection with this application for a 74711 special permit from City Planning. You almost saw the drawing that showed the relief that we're seeking, but there are two aspects of modification of bulk that we are applying for. First is for height and setback, although the, on the east and west sides of the building, the Crosby and Broadway frontages, the penthouse addition is not encroaching into the sky exposure plane. On the Bleecker Street side, along this very long frontage, it does encroach, so we need relief there. Secondly, there is a rooftop recreation requirement that applies to this building, and we are seeking waiver of that requirement so that the penthouse can occupy the roof. The space has not been used by tenants, so it hasn't really performed a function since it's been theoretically created.
But the use is allowed, is that correct?
The use is allowed. The history of this building is that it was actually grandfathered almost entirely, because it was all occupied during the Great Lock Wars. It was occupied back in the 70s under the ownership of Marty Fine, and there was a law board proceeding to determine that it was all an interim multiple dwelling, and so it was all legalized under that condition.
But the increase in square footage as a part of this penthouse, does that require a use change, or?
It's a reallocation of floor area from within the building.
Okay.
Good morning, afternoon Commissioners, Bill Higgins of Higgins Quaspar. I'm going to be, try to go briefly through the historical background and existing conditions, and then Joe Levine, who is the project architect, will describe the proposal. So again, both Joe's description and my background will be concentrating on two areas. One, although it's staff-level review, the restoration work, which has been done and will be done in connection with the 74711, and then the proposed rooftop addition. So here is the building, historical views, the one on the left, 1899, is the earliest one we have. Building was built in 1897, DeLemos and Cordes, a big firm particularly known for department stores, Siegel Cooper, for example. One historical oddity I can't resist saying is that this is in fact the original Empire State Building. It was designed for the Empire State Bank, so that other one, it turns out, is just a copy. The historical photos are showing the balustrade, which was on the roof. They give us nice detail about one-over-one wood windows, and as you'll see, they give us nice detail on storefronts and on the pediment that was over the entry on Broadway. Both the balustrade and pediment are to be restored. There's the 1940 tax photo, at which time the balustrade was still in place, and here's the 1980 photo where the balustrade is gone, and there have been changes to the storefronts, et cetera. So restoration work, again, Joe will be giving you more detail on this, but the balustrade we are proposing to restore. There has been past restoration work in the last six or seven years, which has included putting back the missing sheet metal cornice. We are proposing to repair the special windows, the arch windows. The existing windows are a combination of metal and non-original wood. We are proposing to do all-new one-over-one wood windows. There is an existing storefront master plan, which has been largely completed involving a putting-back storefront infill with a combination of cast iron and sheet metal and wood infill. We'll be completing the work under that master plan, which really leaves this one to be done. And there is an existing conditions photograph. If you look closely, you'll see that the pediment, which is on the Broadway entry, has been shaved off, and that will be put back. There has already been substantial work done on masonry, a combination of brick, stone, and terracotta, but there are, although this list looks impressive, this is really a matter of going back and completing details that need to be done, so hopefully you'll be considering both the substantial restoration work that's already been done, and this additional work we are proposing to complete the restoration, similarly on the Broadway and Crosby Street sides. Existing conditions, cleaned and restored masonry at Broadway and Bleecker Street. There's, in the dark, but the substantial new metal cornice that's been put around the building. These are some deteriorated windows, which still need to be restored and will be done. There's a view of that sliced, shaved cornice over the Broadway entry. Here's the storefronts that have been done according to the master plan, and the one that is left to do, which will also be done, storefront repair, some of it in progress. Rooftop conditions, as mentioned, we're proposing a rooftop addition. This is the existing rooftop. There's substantial stuff that's already up there, both in terms of mechanical and stair bulkheads, et cetera. This is the top of the parapet where the restored balustrade will go. Existing rooftop. And I'll hand it to Joe here. This is where we start describing in a bit more detail the proposed restoration of the balustrade.
So we're starting with the balustrade, so we are replicating from original documentation the original balustrade, and including its original urns, and that configuration takes place on the, with the urns on two elevations, in the Crosby Street and the Broadway elevation. And here's the balustrade across Bleecker Street, with the urns on the two, on the east and west elevations of this very symmetrical facade. This is the existing roof plan. There's two stairs, one on each side, and two elevator bulkheads, and a residential stair bulkhead in the center there. And except for this residential bulkhead, these two stairs and the elevator, the two elevators will remain in our, in our plan. These are the drawings for the balustrade. This is the cornice that we reconstructed, I think that was in 2005 or 2006, and never had the opportunity to add the balustrade to the top of it, but it's now required, and we're happy to do it. Major piece of the restoration is also the entryway that Bill mentioned, and putting back Empire State Building on the top, restoring this limestone. This has been shaved off where some signs that were put on, I guess in the 60s or something. And so we'll be casting new elements to recreate this cornice mantle above the doorway to match the original that we see here. There was an etched piece of glass put in here already, and new doors were installed a few years back that matched the original design, so we're just doing a complete restoration of this original entry to the building. Bill went over the windows a little bit, but this shows on this facade, three unique windows that are comprised of wood components and cast iron casement window components. So these three on this facade, the Oculus and this casement window in the arch, they get restored. The balance of the windows, every one of them, is going to be replaced by historically accurate one-over-one wood windows, high-performance insulated glass wood windows. And this is that Oculus in the arch on Broadway. All of these windows on Crosby and the rest of them on Broadway will get restored. This is the condition of the frames of the windows and the sills. The sash and jams are worse, so all of the windows are going to get replaced. These are details for replacement windows, typical. So this is existing conditions, the existing elevations, and these gray components are the existing roof structures, which you could also see on Broadway over there, and this is the proposed. It's twin penthouses that are symmetrical to reference to strong symmetrical, symmetrality of the building. Here's our balustrade indicated in place, and the, once again, two penthouses, Broadway view of that penthouse. This is a longitudinal section through the building, and a cross-section through the penthouse as well. And this is the proposed roof plan of the penthouses, one on the east and one on the And this is a larger scale of the longitudinal section and cross-section over here, showing the two penthouses with a little bit more detail, and the plans. This is the roof terrace, this is the bulkhead roof. We've stacked all of the mechanical equipment against the north wall, against the south wall, I'm sorry, and it's screened on the upper levels, and there's some situated on the viewing tower situated above the elevator machine room up over there, and these are the existing stair bulkheads. And so this is the penthouse roof plan. This is the stair that accesses the top of the building. And this is the penthouse plan with the atriums in the center there, and the circulation through the interior. So this is the larger elevation, once again, replaced balustrade on all sides, and the penthouse structure up above. So, you want to move it back?
Yeah. Gustavo LaVine speaking. My name is Gustavo, senior, from LaVine Architects. I'm going to speak a little bit about the visibility study. Essentially, the mock-up, the rooftop mock-up is composed of three elements. The first one being the balustrade mockup, which is composed of framing, metal framing, and it's wrapped around with a metal, I'm sorry, a red netting, which you're going to see a lot in the visibility studies, photos taken from different vantage points. And then a series of marker posts, which essentially were installed following the perimeter of the penthouse. So you have taller marker posts here and here, which represents the bulkhead of the penthouse, and then the lower ones, which represents the actual massing of the penthouse. Here's a photo of the mock-up in place, marker posts, and then the balustrade mockup with the red netting on it. There are essentially eight vantage points from which, you know, the visibility study was performed. This one, view number one, on the west end of Bleecker Street, you can, I'm sorry, you can see that the balustrade is visible, but the marker posts are not, and this is going to be the same case in all the other view. Again, balustrade, no marker posts. This is up on Broadway, again, here's the balustrade, and then the next slide has a photo montage of how that balustrade will look once the balustrade is completed, just to give you an idea of, you know, how it's represented. This is from Bleecker Street, balustrade is not even visible. From Lafayette and Bleecker, balustrade is visible. Water tank, which is existing, is visible, no marker posts are visible. Here's up on Lafayette, again, the balustrade is visible, the marker posts are not, and here's our presentation of how that balustrade will look like once it's installed. Another vantage point on the past Lafayette, towards the east on Bleecker Street. Further east, I think this is with the intersection of Elizabeth Street, no, not. Questions?
So therefore, the penthouse, the new penthouse is not visible above the new balustrade, correct?
From any vantage point.
It's the new balustrade sheet metal?
It's made out of fiberglass.
Michael, any comment on that, further comment on the fiberglass as the material?
Yes.
There was, yes. Can you speak to that material?
Yes, please.
Yes, the balustrade is proposed to be constructed out of fiberglass. The balustrade that we, that was originally there was likely sheet metal. It certainly couldn't have been stone, perhaps it wasn't sufficient to support any stone, but, but sheet metal balustrade, of course, was the technology of the day to replicate the stone. The fiberglass is sort of the technology today to replicate that stone as well. So the proposal is that it's a fiberglass construction.
It will be painted so that it's not shiny, bow-hell?
Absolutely, and that's common technology now with fiberglass, gel coats that are matte, finished and match the color perfectly. Have great performance characteristics, longevity, and all of that.
I just wanted to add something. When I saw the mock-up, no pun intended, but to be transparent, you may be able to see or the glass railing on top of the penthouse volume, there's a glass railing, but it would be seen through the balustrade, so that, I don't know how much that would really be detectable once it's constructed, but it was discernible through the mock-up.
Okay. All right, other questions? Okay, we'll take testimony, Barbara Zay.
Barbara Zay of the Historic District Council. HTC found the rooftop addition to be sufficiently concealed and feels that it is a fair project in exchange for the planned restorative work. We are glad to see the return of the balustrade, though when we reviewed it, the drawings were unclear as to what material is going to be used, and we would prefer that the material be in kind. For a truly first-class restoration, however, our committee feels that the storefront should not be overlooked, and recommends that the commission ask for the restoration of the storefront cornice. The entire building would be greatly enhanced by the introduction of a more finely detailed cornice, as this feature is very visible on Broadway. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any more speakers? All right, can you speak to the issue of the cornice on the storefront?
It's not done.
Is it going to, is it part of?
It's going to be, it's going to have some more detail on it. The detail that maybe was mentioned is along here. In fact, there's another bay that has to be done, so it's actually in progress. The master plan was approved and implemented in stages, but it's not done yet, and it's going to be.
All right, but just to be clear, that is a part of your restoration plan, that you will bring back that cornice, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. Yes, is that, yes, Gabriella?
I think it was, you weren't here when that storefront, master plan came forward, but it actually was the same architecture firm and myself, and the plan for the storefronts are all based on historic photographs and existing historic material that was on the building at the time, so, yeah, there's not much we could add to the storefront master plan when we looked at this proposal.
Okay, all right. Any other comments or questions? All right, not comments, but questions, any more questions? Right, we'll close the hearing. Michael, I just want to ask you the question about the material, and, because I think, you know, one of the really beneficial parts of this proposal is in fact bringing back that balustrade, so I think it is important for us to feel comfortable with the material that they're proposing.
When you see cornices that get redone with fiberglass, there's always that very awkward spacing, the individual elements are always much shorter. And in general, because when you, when you don't maintain the paint film on fiberglass, it degrades under ultraviolet light. I have a, I have a problem with it for that reason. When, I really think that per square foot, sheet metal would actually be a lighter material and easier material to work with. All of that said, however, this is 110 feet off the sidewalk, and the way it's going to be fabricated, I think, is completely appropriate, and I actually applaud the fact that you're putting the balustrade back on. Thank you. So I absolutely can approve this.
And one thing is that since this is a 74711, as a part of that, there has to be an ongoing maintenance plan, so I think, and you know, Jared and Caroline can correct me if I'm wrong, but that includes a reporting structure that is before, at staff level, so the idea of ongoing maintenance and painting of the balustrade should be addressed through that. All right, other comments? Yes, Michael?
I thought I heard him say that the new piece of the entry was going to be cast stone. I think if it is a 74711, they might investigate doing it out of limestone, if that's the material, otherwise, that's great.
Okay, other comments? All right, I think overall, this is a very nice sort of restoration project. I think that the penthouse that they're proposing, for most parts, except for technically can be seen through the balustrade, is not visible. And even if it was, it's sort of a lighter material, and, you know, I'm happy that the building's already going through its, the certain amount of restoration work could that be completed, but I think the added elements as a part of this proposal before us will enhance the project even more. All right, so, and no other comments, we can proceed with decision. Diana, would you like to read that, please? Diana?
Okay. All right. In the matter of a certificate of appropriateness, Borough of Manhattan, 165517640 Broadway, AKA 172 Crosby Street, and 60-74 Bleecker Street, NoHo Historic District, block 522, lot 14. Application is to construct a rooftop addition, zoned M15B. I recommend approval, finding that the presence of one-story rooftop addition will not significantly alter the overall scale of the building, that the building historically featured rooftop accretions, including bulkheads and water towers visible from public thoroughfares. Therefore, the presence of rooftop structures will be in keeping with the character of the building, that the simple design and details and dark-colored finish of the proposed additions and bulkheads will be in keeping with the utilitarian character of the existing rooftop structures, thereby helping to integrate these structures into the existing roof scape and not drawing attention away from the significant features of the building and streetscapes, that the enclosed penthouse and bulkheads will not be visible from any public thoroughfares, that the glass railing at the roof of the penthouse addition will be minimally visible for a limited vantage point, from a limited vantage point, looking south on Broadway and looking west on Lafayette Street, and will be seen through the proposed replicated rooftop balustrade, and is therefore obscured, and that the proposed balustrade is nine stories above the street, and therefore a change in material from the historic metal to fiberglass will not be perceptible from the street, nor will the change in material detract from the significant features of the building.
Should we read the other one?
Take a vote on this one.
Okay, we take a vote on this, and then we take, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, this application has been approved.
Okay. Let me go with the next one, yes. In the matter of a modification of use and bulk, Borough of Manhattan, 165773640 Broadway, AKA 172 Crosby Street, and 60-74 Bleecker Street, NoHo Historic District, block 522, lot 14. Application is to request that the Landmarks Preservation Commission issue a report to the City Planning Commission relating to an application for a modification of bulk pursuant to Section 74711 of the zoning resolution, zoned M15B. I recommend approval, finding that the restorative work that will be approved pursuant to LPC 16-6484 will return the building closer to its original appearance, and will reinforce the architectural and historic character of the building, the streetscape, and the Ladies' Mile Historic District, that the restorative work, including repairing the masonry and terracotta, replacing the copper cornice in kind, replacing nonhistoric windows, and cleaning the facades, will bring the building up to a sound first-class condition and at eight in its long-term preservation, that installing a replica of the historic balustrade at the roof and recreating the decorative stone entablature, stone entablature at Broadway entrance, will restore missing historic architectural elements at the building, and will reinforce the architectural and historic character of the building and the historic district, that the implementation of a cyclical maintenance plan will ensure the continued maintenance of the building in a sound first-class condition, and that the owners of the designated building have committed themselves to establishing a cyclical maintenance plan that will be legally enforceable by the Landmarks Preservation Commission under the provisions of a restrictive declaration which will bind all heirs, successors, and assigns, and which will be recorded at the New York County Registrar's Office.
You just want to make a correction, that it's not Ladies' Mile Historic District, but the Seohok Cast Iron Historic District?
Yeah, I kind of wondered.
I know, it was, it was, oh, NoHo, sorry.
It's NoHo, it's the NoHo Historic District, not Ladies' Mile Historic District.
Okay, borders are very close, so.
Okay.
One side of Broadway, the other side.
Yeah.
OhHo's, okay. All right, so second that, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? This application has been approved.